The time is seven o'clock and it's time for the regular meeting of the Howl Township Board of Education reorganization meeting to come to order. We have a roll call, please. Mr. Bonjovani.
President.
Mr. German.
Here.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
President.
Mrs. Malley.
Here.
Mrs. Mangano.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Okerson.
President.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
A quorum is present, shall we rise to salute the flag and then please remain standing for a rendition of the National Anthem by Ms. Leah Palazzano of Middle School North.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is Miss, she's not here?
I am certainly not.
Well, we will probably try to schedule that another day, please be seated, thank you.
She won't do it right now, she wants to fill it back.
Oops. Announcement by the President pro tem, as read by myself, adequate notice of this meeting as required by Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, were distributed by the Secretary on Wednesday, December 18th, 2019. On November 5th, 2019, we held an election for Board of Education. The successful candidates were Mr. Joseph Tate, Mr. Mark Bonjovani, and Ms. Kristi Mangano. Mr. Tate unfortunately was unable to accept it and at the last meeting, the Board appointed Mr. Lawrence Gurman to fill the one-year seat vacated by Mr. Tate. I will now administer the oath of office to those three members. If you would like to join me in front of the dais, I don't think we have to go down in front, there's enough room here. Do you want to be joined?
Yeah.
Anybody want to come up and stand here, I heard somebody might want to. Come on, come on, come on!
Do you have a pen?
I don't. Do Al has a pen?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, will the three members receiving the oath, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am forthright, go ahead.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And to the governments established in the United States in this state. And to the governments established in the United States in this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. So help me God. So help me God.
I, state your name again.
I am Mark Bonjovani.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of a member of Board of Education.
For the office of a member of Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1.
Am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all of the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, you are reelected and reappointed to the Howl Township Board of Education. Congratulations, sir, congratulations, Mangano. If you would please sign where indicated and pass it back to Ms. George sometime soon.
You can get up and get more than I ever.
When are we doing the logo? Why don't we do it when we do the logo? Okay, as the Board reorganizes, first order of business for the Board is to select from among its members, its president. Are there nominations at this time? Mr. Miller.
Ms. Sanisak, at this time I nominate Mr. Bonjovani to Board President. Mr. Bonjovani has led us as Board President last year and I've seen that his dedication to the Board speaks a lot for our district and I think that our Board should continue with his leadership into the next year, so at this time I would like to nominate him.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Malley for Mr. Bonjovani, are there any other nominations at this time? Seeing none, the nominations for the seat of Board Vice, Board President are closed. I will take that around, a yes is to appoint Mr. Bonjovani President, a no would be to open the floor back up. Mr. Bonjovani.
Yes.
Mr. German.
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Bonjovani, the Board has unanimously appointed you President for the 2020 Board Year. Sir, the meeting is yours.
I believe the next item is for nominations for a VP.
Yes, sir.
Would anybody like to make a nomination? I would, it's unusual but I'm going to do it. I have watched, I've watched Al for a number of years now, not just during the last year as his position of VP, but just overall in terms of dedication he's had to school boards, to the Board of Education of Howl, to the children of New Jersey, his participation in activities such as legislative activities, his past involvement with the DEA, the dedication he brings to this position is unmatched. He really is a sense of, a sense of reason, he just brings the right attitude to the position and so I would like to nominate Al Miller for VP.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Bonjovani, seconded by Dr. Jeffrey to nominate Mr. Al Miller for Vice President of the Board, are there other, oh, sir, I'm doing your job, are there other nominations at this time? Seeing none.
Take it around.
Shall I take that around, sir?
Please.
Thank you. Mr. Bonjovani.
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Mr. German.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Bonjovani, the Board has unanimously appointed you President for the 2020 Board Year. Sir, the meeting is yours.
I believe the next item is for nominations for a VP.
Yes, sir.
Would anybody like to make a nomination? I would, it's unusual but I'm going to do it. I have watched, I've watched Al for a number of years now, not just during the last year as his position of VP, but just overall in terms of dedication he's had to school boards, to the Board of Education of Howl, to the children of New Jersey, his participation in activities such as legislative activities, his past involvement with the DEA, the dedication he brings to this position is unmatched. He really is a sense of, a sense of reason, he just brings the right attitude to the position and so I would like to nominate Al Miller for VP.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Bonjovani, seconded by Dr. Jeffrey to nominate Mr. Al Miller for Vice President of the Board, are there other, oh, sir, I'm doing your job, are there other nominations at this time? Seeing none.
Take it around.
Shall I take that around, sir?
Please.
Thank you. Mr. Bonjovani.
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Mr. German.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Miller, you have been appointed 9-0 unanimous as the Vice President for the 2020 Board Year.
Thank you very much.
We don't need to assume chairs, you're already in the right seats. We saved these from last year so we have them.
Very efficient of you.
It is two things now, it is time for recognitions, which I will turn over to Mr. Izola, but we also would like to have a board picture for the reorganization in front of our new logo board, step and repeat, so if you would all join us at that wall of logos, would you like to do the recognition while they're down here and Katie takes the?
I didn't know either, I would have wanted Jackie.
So as the Board makes its way down to the step and repeat, hold up on the pictures, we're going to, while you're all there, we'll do Ms. Valentino, we'll thank her for her work and you'll all get to say thank you because she was like mega awesome and we'll talk about, anyone who could tolerate me, Bruce, Doty, Claire, Ron, is mega awesome. So as the Board assembles there, at this time I'd like to, yeah, we could do that, let's just bear with me one second, I wanted you all there so we can thank just together as a team and then I'll jump over the wall here and figure out how this is all working in our, in our new surroundings. So, at this time I would like on behalf of the Board and the school district to recognize Jessica Valentino for her work in designing the logo or bringing our design concept to life, I think is a, is a better term and while we went through a couple of months and really an 18-month process of coming up with a new logo, you know, we had the proof of concept and every time we would send, you know, I'd see a few people twitch and say, nah, it's not really capturing our thoughts and it wasn't until we reached out to one of our very own parents and Ms. Valentino is not only a graphic artist by night, she's also a PTA, PTO President of the Bulldog Group and she's a memorial, gribbling PTO President currently and has served as Executive Board and a member of the PTAs for quite some time and her willingness to just roll her sleeves up and get in there and give us different renditions and versions of this yielded a wonderful, exciting new logo which we introduced at our last meeting, so I thought it was most appropriate if we take the opportunity tonight to all celebrate her willingness to continue to give to the district in many different ways but specifically as getting this logo to print. We're excited to have our step and repeat, we'll organize that in just a sec, but if Ms. Valentino can come up and Mr. Bonjovani and Mr. Miller, if you could, there's a certificate and a framed logo, so I want to, and the ornament there, yes. Hanging ornament, yes.
If you had seen all of the different tribes of this, you could have filled the room and it really did start with some students' terms and what they came up with, but I think this far exceeds anything we may have imagined, so thank you very much, this will be the symbol for all the long time and I think it really speaks to what goes on in this country, so thank you so much.
It is two things now, it is time for recognitions, which I will turn over to Mr. Izola, but we also would like to have a board picture for the reorganization in front of our new logo board, step and repeat, so if you would all join us at that wall of logos, would you like to do the recognition while they're down here and Katie takes the?
I didn't know either, I would have wanted Jackie.
So as the Board makes its way down to the step and repeat, hold up on the pictures, we're going to, while you're all there, we'll do Ms. Valentino, we'll thank her for her work and you'll all get to say thank you because she was like mega awesome and we'll talk about, anyone who could tolerate me, Bruce, Doty, Claire, Ron, is mega awesome. So as the Board assembles there, at this time I'd like to, yeah, we could do that, let's just bear with me one second, I wanted you all there so we can thank just together as a team and then I'll jump over the wall here and figure out how this is all working in our, in our new surroundings. So, at this time I would like on behalf of the Board and the school district to recognize Jessica Valentino for her work in designing the logo or bringing our design concept to life, I think is a, is a better term and while we went through a couple of months and really an 18-month process of coming up with a new logo, you know, we had the proof of concept and every time we would send, you know, I'd see a few people twitch and say, nah, it's not really capturing our thoughts and it wasn't until we reached out to one of our very own parents and Ms. Valentino is not only a graphic artist by night, she's also a PTA, PTO President of the Bulldog Group and she's a memorial, gribbling PTO President currently and has served as Executive Board and a member of the PTAs for quite some time and her willingness to just roll her sleeves up and get in there and give us different renditions and versions of this yielded a wonderful, exciting new logo which we introduced at our last meeting, so I thought it was most appropriate if we take the opportunity tonight to all celebrate her willingness to continue to give to the district in many different ways but specifically as getting this logo to print. We're excited to have our step and repeat, we'll organize that in just a sec, but if Ms. Valentino can come up and Mr. Bonjovani and Mr. Miller, if you could, there's a certificate and a framed logo, so I want to, and the ornament there, yes. Hanging ornament, yes.
If you had seen all of the different tribes of this, you could have filled the room and it really did start with some students' terms and what they came up with, but I think this far exceeds anything we may have imagined, so thank you very much, this will be the symbol for all the long time and I think it really speaks to what goes on in this country, so thank you so much.
Just in advance, the monument was actually made by one of our teachers who does woodworking and soaked this and made this, this great penny, maybe Christmas morning or wherever, but I really, I really think it came out cool. Yeah, it's nice. Take one picture.
I was about to move, that's why we have to talk.
I was about to move. That's why we have to talk. I was about to move. I was about to move. It's simple, boy, I just say nine, but take one picture. I have a number, I think. It's like, it's like, it's like, I was about to talk. I was about to move, that's why we have to talk. I was about to move. 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 I've done it, Dr. Lo has done it, I believe, I think, I think Mrs. Mangano has done it. So, Mrs. Malley, I'm sorry. So it has been done before. It's at least a way to participate, to still be heard at the meeting. It's a little bit different doing it electronically, again, having done it from Virginia one time, but it is a way still to take part in the meeting. So that might be something, if you know you're gonna be away, to look at. I don't think that meeting dates can really be changed for one person or two if they're gonna be away. If we had that many people, three or four, then we might have to look at dates, but for right now, I think that's, that's the bigger thing, is to see if you can participate electronically. In regards to Committee meetings, I would encourage all of the Chairs appointed tonight to have conversations with the other members who are on their Committee and talk to them about nights that they, nights or days that they know are definitely out. You know, because of work, I always work a Tuesday night, or I always work a Thursday night, or I have a special event coming up tonight. If possible, it would be nice to be able to talk to your fellow members and say, what will be convenient for this Committee? The other piece of that is, just as we plan out the whole year's calendar and distribute it tonight, anytime you can look at the calendar and say, you know what, here's the next four meetings, here's the next meetings going forward, that would be very helpful for Board members to be able to plan around, okay, it's January now, but there's a meeting at the end of February, let me see what I can do work-wise to make sure I attend that. So that would be very helpful. So I would certainly encourage everybody to look at calendars, reach out to your fellow members on your Committee, and try to plan accordingly, and plan looking ahead into the future to try to make it easier for people to attend.
Dr. Lo?
You just mentioned about the Committee meetings being open. Now, Professional Learning was not open.
Thank you.
So unless you want to change that, but the point is, the Professional Learning Committee is about the Board's own personal development and growth, and there may be some topics that may be particular to a certain situation that would be a little uncomfortable to share with the public. So unless you've changed that, I know the intent of that was, that was just for-
No, thank you, thank you for bringing that up.
...Board members and our own personal growth and boardsmanship and issues that arise amongst the Board.
Right, that is just for Board members. In fact, in the past, we've had that, wouldn't really be for the Board members who were on the Committee. Since you're chairing that, I think that would be your preference in terms of whether you would like to see Board members from, who are not on the Committee. That's maybe a discussion that we could have offline in another point. The other thing, I guess I would like you to do, I'm not sure if it comes from Mr. Sanisak or which part of the office it comes from, one of the valuable pieces of work that Dr. Lo led PLC through over the last year was to look at the different positions such as Board Chairs and the expectations in the work done by that. And what I would ask you to do is, maybe tomorrow, if you could share that piece from the PLC's work back out to the entire Board? We will see that it's done. Thank you. You know, that's, it's worth looking over to remind everybody, you know, okay, I'm new to being a Chair, how do I, how do I work at this? Or reach out to experienced Chairs at any point. Thank you. And thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bonjovani, I believe it is in the manual, so Mr. Preston's pulling it out now, finding it digitally. If in fact that is accurate, we will certainly digitally send it to each of the Board members again.
I know we did talk about the duties of the Chair.
Yes.
I think it's the last section of that, and it was valuable work that Dr. Lo led us through, so. Mr. Gorman?
And again, I know that each of the Committee Chairs each year works with the Committee and everyone else to try to determine what the Committee goals for the year would be. So I imagine that's another thing we want to review, again, as we start a new year, to see whether the goals are the same or whether we want to alter them at all.
One of the things that I thought was very useful last year was that certain Committees, it certainly happened in Education, was at the end of the meeting to look back at the goals for both the Committee and for the District as a whole. I would even encourage you at various times during the year for us to maybe, you know, every second or third, every third or fourth meeting to pull back out Strategic Plan and say, where are we in terms of this? You know, how are we matching what the community helped us decide should be the goals for the District? So that's another worthwhile piece, but, you know, it was something that certainly Education did it, I believe, I believe Operations did it also, looking back at the, at the goals and saying, okay, here's, here's the pieces of that that we touched on tonight. Thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Miller?
As you know, this is, Finance Committee is gonna be starting on the budget season, so I invite all the Board members to come out. That's where we're gonna be starting all our work, getting our budget together, and when we get to the tentative budget and the budget, when you see that huge document put in front of us, it's a lot of numbers to digest at a, at a meeting real quickly. So if you want to come out to the Finance Meeting and watch us develop the budget, I invite you all to come out to that meeting and watch us develop that, to get insight into that. I know sometime in January, the Committee is gonna have to get together. Our audit is ready. Our auditor has informed us, so we have to get that to use for our meeting before the end of January, so that document's gonna be discussed at our next Finance Meeting sometime in January. But we are actively, we have set up a tentative budget calendar, and we're gonna be getting that ready, because I believe sometime in February, the numbers will come out from the Governor, and we have to move quickly, because we're given a short span. At the beginning of May, we have to get a tentative budget back to the state, so.
De, Mr. Miller, unless the Governor's given another extension, which he was last year, it will be the third Tuesday of February that he'll speak. The numbers will be out by that Thursday, by statute, 48 hours after his budget address, and then the tentative will be on our March 18th meeting. It's due by the 20th, so it's a very short window.
We have to get that budget overturned quickly, so I invite you, if you want to come out to one of those budget meetings to hear us develop the budget.
Thank you.
Question, I mean, more than a comment, but I do recall, I think last year, and looking at all the Committees, we weren't, our strategic plan had not been developed, but I thought there was some discussion that now that we're really full swing into the strategic plan, that our goal should be kind of in tandem with those outcome statements in the plan, so that, you know, we're not going here, and the strategic plan is going here, the Administration's purpose as they put together that action plan. But I do recall that, last year was different because we didn't have it, but now that we do, we want to make sure that we're working in tandem with those outcomes that are in our strategic plan. So that's just a question.
I would think two pieces. One, certainly because the retreat typically happens mid-year, might be a good time to review it. But the other thing, maybe as a discussion item, not necessarily for January, but the meeting after, maybe as a discussion item, not to do a full-blown, let's do the strategic plan, the whole thing again, but it might be worth it to make sure that we all take a, take a look and bring it back forward to the Board for a brief discussion on, here are some of the high points that we knew from Strategic Plan, and how are we gonna make sure that we have Committees addressing those?
And also quarterly, you know, the, 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 the,[1165.23]
They could be appointed at any point.
Finance needs to get to work.
Announced at the meeting. And we already know a couple of the people who would like to return to Finance, and that certainly would make sense. They've been so intimately involved in it.
Thank you. Moving along.
Back to the agenda.
Yes. On the minutes, we do need a motion for the minutes. However, I would ask that the last meeting had two executive sessions. So after the motion, I'll be asking for three votes: regular, Exec 1, Exec 2, in that order, if that is acceptable to you.
Sure.
Okay. Could we have a mover and a seconder on minutes, please?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Malley, seconded by Mr. Miller. Okay, once again, if you would vote regular, Exec 1, Exec 2.
Would Exec 2 be one I would not vote on?
Yes. Yes. May I? Mr. Bon Jevani?
Yes, please go ahead.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
All three?
Three votes, yes, all three.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes, all three.
Thank you. Mr. Gurman?
Yes, on 1 and 2, and abstain from 3.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes, on all three.
Thank you. Dr. Lo?
Yes, on all three.
Thank you. Mrs. Mangano?
Yes, on 1 and 3.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes, on all three.
Mr. Thor?
I was not here, so I abstain on all three.
Thank you. Mr. Bon Jevani?
Yes, on all three.
The minutes are approved. Eight in favor, one abstention on 1, on the regular session. Seven in favor, two abstentions on the executive session 1. Seven in favor, two abstentions on executive session 2. All of the minutes are approved. Thank you for your indulgence on that. The correspondence that the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for the board president's comments. President of the Board, Mr. Bon Jevani, your comments, sir.
Well, I think I've made a lot of comments already. But again, first off, I'd like to thank my fellow board members for appointing me president again. Very sincere when I say it's one -- it's a seat that's one of nine, so let's keep that in mind as we move forward. The other thing, and it just goes back to committees for a second, and knowing that there are people who do watch this from home, please understand that one of the things that happens is our Legislative Advocacy Committee. And that committee, I anticipate, will have a very active role this year, along with Finance, because of all the things that are coming out of Trenton, with cuts and with other plans that might forward from Trenton. What I would ask you to do is to think about attending advocacy and legislative advocacy when one has the opportunity. Keep in mind that this board will take its advocacy responsibility for the public very seriously. If that means writing letters, if it means meeting with legislators, we will do everything we can in respect to that. But we certainly encourage the public to keep abreast of what the issues are coming out of Trenton and to join us in those advocacy issues. There's nothing like a letter being written to your congressman or to your senator or to the governor saying, hey, here's something I've been made aware of, would like you to take a look at that again. I'm not talking about the letters that happen because you receive an email saying, put your name in here, and it spits something out. Those things, and we've been told by representatives before, become a pile that is used often to pop up doors and stuff. I'm talking about a real letter being written saying, you know, I'm aware of testing, I'm aware of Finance, I'm aware of funding, and could you consider this? So to the public, I encourage you to take part and work with the board in terms of those advocacy issues for yourself and for your children. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Time for superintendent's report. Superintendent of the Board, Mr. Isola.
Thank you, sir. And good evening, everyone. I'll begin my very brief report tonight, which perhaps is a New Year resolution, we'll see, by saying Happy New Year to not only the board and all of our guests here tonight, but to our entire community. May 2020 be a wonderful and happy, healthy school year for all of us, as we hold those things dear to us. There are certain things in our control and some things that are not. So we hope for health, and we hope for happiness and wellness for our community. I'd like to congratulate not only our reappointed three board members that were reappointed tonight, but the entire board. I'd like to thank for your willingness to serve and volunteer in this capacity. It's often a thankless position when viewed from the outside in, but I know the nine of you all understand the important work and contributions that you make. And I hope that is extremely gratifying to each of you and collectively as a board. At the end of the day, what you do as a member of this board matters to our community, and I want to take this opportunity to say thank you. I'm really excited that this Monday, we will release our registration for our parent university, which will take place on January 21 at Middle School North. The doors will open at 6 for the general session, as we've talked about with Ian Hockley from Dylan's Wings of Hope, followed by breakout sessions that will be finalized at our meeting tomorrow, our final meeting for this tomorrow, and then organized in a digital registration that will be sent out to our community, as well as robocalls to our community to make sure they are aware of this wonderful opportunity. So we're excited about the offerings to finalize and go through those tomorrow and then announce those to our community on Monday. For this reporting period, during the month of December, there were seven school, out-of-school suspensions for this reporting period. And that concludes my report this evening. Again, Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you, sir.
It's now time for the first public comment. May I ask, sir?
Please.
Whereas the House Township Board of Education determines the comments from the public may last 45 minutes, most comments will be reflected in accordance with O164.1, and then may be limited to three minutes each. With all due respect, the time and decorum will be the President of the Board, Mr. Bon Jevani. Would you permission the floor be opened?
Please.
Are there comments at this time? See, no more comments, the floor will be closed. It is now time for committee updates and liaison reports. I'm not sure that anybody's met, but I'll start from my left. Mr. Gurman.
I'll wait now, thank you.
Okay.
Well, again, on legislative advocacy, and you mentioned it, and thank you for appointing your chair. Obviously, there's a lot that we'd like to do in reaching out. One area we certainly -- oh, I can't.
One area we'd like to work with, one other committee for sure, is community interaction, because that group is so involved, and that's something we had talked about in the past. The other thing is to try to reach out to people in the PTAs and PTOs to reach that part of the, you know, Howell population. But we've also talked about other groups in town, people who are involved, who are taxpayers as well, and to get everyone to understand what the consequences are of seeing, for instance, with funding, the problems that we have. And it's a cumulative process that will affect the district for years on end. So we're looking forward to bringing as many people into the process as possible and working on that, and making people a little bit more aware of what we've done, where we are, what we need to try to continue our achievements and to not backslide. Because, again, the district's done a great job. We have a marvelous superintendent and administration, fantastic faculty and staff. But if you keep cutting back the numbers of the funding, we're in trouble. Again, just to say something we know, and Mr. Sanisak gave a tremendous presentation before the committee a few weeks ago, and I hope we're going to do that again, maybe in a little different format. But if you look at where we were in 2009, now we're in 2020, and we see where the state funding was and where we were a year or two ago, we're really behind the eight ball. Because in 10 years, even with a 2% inflation rate a year, that eats away the resources. And now with the law that's now in a second year, this year we're losing $1.6 million. Last year, we lost 1.2, and it just builds. It has a very detrimental effect. And it's just important that the citizens of town understand what we have, what we need to try to maintain it and improve it, and to certainly not have, you know, negative consequences. Because sometimes, when you get behind the eight ball, it's not just for a year. So anyway, we're really looking forward to bringing everybody into the process.
So that brings to mind something we learned from last year, is that to make sure that our agendas, when we draw up the agendas for the committees, have enough detail so that somebody from the public looking at the agenda would see that that might be a topic on the agenda for that night, if they were drawn to attend to that. Working with community interaction, you know, at one point, we were doing short clips of different things happening in our district, in the classrooms and other places, and putting them up on our district website. You know, it might be something for your two committees to look at and certainly talk to Mr. Isola and Mr. Sanisak. Maybe that's something that's worthy of a brief, brief being the word, but some type of presentation put on the website, so that people can always refer back to that to see just how dire that situation is. So thank you for bringing that up.
Can I ask a quick question? Is there some objection to posting something like that on one of the Facebook pages?
When you say "the" Facebook page, I would say --
The Facebook pages. There's Howell Cares About Schools and Where People Watch.
Well, that's what I was going to say. I would say, put it on our Facebook pages. Now, whether somebody wants to copy that and put it on one of those other pages, certainly anything that goes on our pages is public information. If somebody chose to repeat that or share it to one of those pages, there's no harm in that. There's no harm in somebody sharing an agenda either. So, you know, there's --
Because I do know that people do tend to watch that.
Right. I think the sharing without comment is probably a smart idea, and I'm sure Mr. Wooters, who's still here, would agree with that.
Yes.
Thank you. So, you know, we could, I think that says what we need to say about that. Mr. Thor?
Community interaction did not meet since the last meeting, and Labor also did not meet since the last meeting. So there was no report for either.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Malley?
Operations has not met since the last meeting.
Dr. Lo?
No reports.
No reports. Mr. Miller?
No reports.
Really?
Nope.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Nothing.
Mrs. Okerson, anything to add? Nothing? That ends committee reports. Thank you. It is now time for the consent agenda, sir. A mover and a seconder?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Malley, seconded by Mr. Thor. I do ask your indulgence or consideration on 6,000-3. As you all know, we are continuing with the process down in the spaces we will be moving into in this building. There were some glitches with the state contract number and a couple other things, but I really would not want to wait until the next meeting. I would ask for you to authorize me to award that contract, either through a state contract or other approved purchasing method, prior to the next meeting, as soon as those issues are resolved. It is on the agenda tonight with blanks, but because of a number that did not match the state purchase website, I need to do some more research.
Would there be a number to at least put the "not to exceed" by to fill in that?
The current quote is $54,000, but I expect it to be less than that. So if you, just in case I'm wrong, if it's not to exceed $55,000, that would be acceptable.
I would entertain a motion from the board to include that as part of that motion.
That's not going to lock you in?
No, not at all. I, no, no.
Is this for the entire area?
Yes.
Entire of your floor?
For the flooring. I'm sorry if I didn't say that. It's for the flooring in the entire area. It's mostly a carpet square product that's similar to what's up here and in the hallway down there, not matching exactly, but a similar type of product, so that there's some continuity and some what's known today as vinyl plank. It's a tile that's long rectangular instead of square, with cove face and all the installation and --
Is there any kind of warranty? So we know what kind of lifespan we're going to get out of it?
Yes, there is a warranty, as well as workmanship warranty.
Do you need a separate motion for that?
Well, Mr. Bon Jevani asked for a motion to amend 6,000-3 to reflect that. So I believe that would be in order first, and then we'll take the consent agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Malley. May I take that around?
Please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Gurman?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes, but I'm going to recuse myself on 5,000-1, as I was not here for that discussion.
We're not -- We're just doing the modification to 6,003 right now, sir.
6,003, then, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bon Jevani?
Yes.
Okay, 6,003 is amended to authorize me to enter into that agreement. And now with the consent agenda being Ms. Malley and Mr. Miller, may I, I'm sorry. Who were the mover and seconder on the consent? Malley and Thor. Thank you. Ms. Malley and Mr. Thor, may I take the consent agenda around?
Yes, but I'd like to make a real quick comment on 6,004 first, the regional leadership training. If you read the flyer that came along from New Jersey school boards about that, the flyer says that this is meant for presidents and vice presidents. But it's also pretty clear on that, and it really should be taken to heart, that those leadership trainings are for anybody who is on a board, not just for the people who have been named to the positions. As I said before, and I believe it, I think that we are all leaders on this board and should certainly see ourselves in that position. So if you were at all dismayed by the comment on the flyer that it's for presidents or vice presidents, please don't let that affect your wanting to attend that session. Thank you.
And with that, please let Ms. George know if you wish to attend. May I take it around, sir?
Please.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes, but now that I'm voting on the right one, yes, and I will recuse myself on 5,000-1.
Thank you. Mr. Gurman?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Jevani?
Yes, but I recuse myself on 3,004.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Nine votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstentions noted for the record. It is now time for the second public comment, sir.
Please.
Whereas the Township Board of Education determines the comments may last 45 minutes and will be conducted in accordance with O164.1, the officer respects the time and decorum will be Mr. Bon Jevani, the President of the Board. Would you permission, may the floor be opened?
Sure.
Are there comments at this time? Seeing none again, sir?
Close it.
The floor is closed.
Move it.
Second.
The board is adjourned. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all.